We are starting recording the policy meeting, starting at four thirty three. So, thank you all for coming to Policy Committee. We've gone ahead and started the recording. Let's just go ahead and do a quick introduction of everyone that's in the room. So, if you want to start us off?
I am Amanda Marshall, I'm a parent and community member.
Perfect.
Amanda Leach.
Carla Hayglum.
Teacher.
Tacke Peterson.
Stacy Lawler, teacher.
Shona Fontaine, assistant principal.
Mary Kowaf, committee member and teacher, district.
Rebecca Davis, executive assistant.
Lynn Pazey, I feel like I have some parents.
Multi-headed.
And I'm Maria Partner, clerk of the board.
And I'm Michelle Thompson, with many hats as well. So, we are going to jump right in. We did send out the policies that we went over last week, which was Policy thirty-five fifty and thirty-five fifty P, and those were sent out for survey. So, we'll pull up those survey results and go through the results to make sure. The reason we send them out for parent input, it's parent and staff.
What?
That's okay.
Oh, she's looking at the survey.
Oh, okay. We send them out for parent and staff input, because, you know, not everybody comes to the Policy Committee meetings. And then we review the comments to make sure and determine if, you know, we need clarification within the language, or if a parent brings up a suggestion or an idea to enhance the policy so that it better fits our needs, then we'll add that in before these go to the board. Okay, so, thirty-five fifty is removal of student during school hours and a policy. Okay.
Procedure.
Oh, the procedure, thank you. Is this in regard to picking your student up from school, or is this in regards to interrogation? Is this also from sporting events, or just the school day? Well, it's during school hours.
Do they're just confused because we adjust on the?
Interrogation one.
Interrogation one.
You also have sporting events that happen during the day, though. Like, sometimes kids leave sporting events from school, so that could be why they're asking that.
Okay, well, let's pull the draft policy, right? Well, I think this first sentence kind of addresses it. During school hours. So, this policy is specific to school hours, whether it's school grounds, school building, or school function. Which the school function, I think, would be inclusive of sports. Do we need to clarify that?
No.
Oh, no. Lincoln School District kicks kids out because they can't handle them. Shouldn't count if the school kicks kids out. Lincoln School District is going downhill. Okay. And now, coming back, okay. No, no, absolutely not, okay. Original policy should be kept. Under no circumstances should anyone not authorized by the parent guardian be able to remove a child from school, obviously, if it's crime-related.
I feel like they read this wrong.
I'm... Okay. Well, we didn't really change much about the policy. So, I wonder if they were... Did we make sure to link the correct policy? Okay.
Double check.
Okay. All right. There's not that much that was changed within the policy, so I'm not really sure.
I just think they... They... If they... It could be that they just think that you can remove because of the title, but I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is a student that needs to be removed for any reason, or because this student is causing a problem and they need to be removed?
This policy is specific to if somebody wanted to come pick up a child from school and take leave the campus. That has to be funneled through our emergency contacts in Skyward. So, somebody can't just, you know, randomly show up and say, hey, I'm Uncle, and I want to pick this child up without parent permission.
I think there, Mr. Ethan, yeah, later in the comment, it says something about CPS and...
The only thing I can think of is they're just reading the title where it says removal of a student, and so there's been a, you can't remove my kid.
Should it be general removal, or something that's like alleging to that it's not, because then people aren't seeing something more into it than what it actually is?
So, it seems like, I mean, removal is... Seems to be coming from kind of an outward, outside source. Whereas, I think, parents are accustomed to our checking-out system. The kids have to be signed out and checked out and, you know, identification verified and that kind of thing. So, they're seeing this as kind of a step up.
That's how I interpret it, too.
It's just, it's a... The removal, I think, is a stronger word than what they're used to.
Different definition.
Retrieving a student?
Retrieval, yeah.
So, no, I read it as not a student leaving early. I read it as a student who needs to be re-...
I think the language is just feels stronger.
That's what I was indicating.
So, do we want to say retrieval, or dismiss, release?
Releasing students.
Or more early, a student during school hours?
I would say released rather than removed.
I think remit, release, instead of dismissal.
Yeah.
Because that's more of a teacher term.
Yeah.
Should not be released from school grounds or any school building.
But then if we do that, can we put that in the title of the doc, too? Because when you upload it, it'll be in the title, yeah.
Yeah, and then students shall not be released from school grounds.
And this is just making sure that they... It funnels through the process, what we always do.
And this is part of what we discussed last week about, like, just fine tuning, making sure the emergency contacts are up to date with custody issues.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's really the only time it gets great, is if we don't have up-to-date paperwork. And then parents will say that it exists, but we don't have it, so we have to honor what we have, until they bring in something that's more up-to-date. And it has to be signed by the judge. The very bottom in blue, we have removal still, if you want to say releasing of the student.
Well, that's our...
I S B A.
I want the fourth sentence down, the person seeking to remove the student.
Before a student is removed to... Oh, did you get that one? Or released? Right. But we're saying... Does that even make sense, though?
Before a student is released or excused, the person seeking to remove the student must present to the satisfaction of the principal with evidence of his or her proper authority to remove the student.
Right. Summary, I was suggesting these...
Seeking to leave, leave with the student?
To get rid of that remove language.
More sense to keep it in there, just didn't know if we're trying to get rid of that word completely.
We were, but then when I read it, I'm like, oh, that's... You can't release. The person's not looking to release the student, they're looking to remove them. But they're seeking to...
Well, they're requesting release.
Yeah.
I think remove is fine here, because they are taking...
Or to leave with.
Yeah.
Do we want to change this, remove to leave with?
You could put to leave with the student. Yeah.
Looks good, looks good. You can't be too cautious in releasing students without verifiable information. No, yes, no, yes. More descript, but does not include medical emergency. Appreciate that parents are included. Very broad and nondescript, appreciate that parents are included.
I mean, the medical emergency is the one that is the most concerning to me, because I feel like that's what somebody would call about, that could be some random, and I think we'd still have to verify.
Right.
If we've had a med... Like, when we've had seizures, or we've had a situation, we can't get ahold of both parents, we literally go down the emergency contact list. And we had a situation where I couldn't get ahold of anybody, and the student had to go to the hospital, so I rode in the ambulance as the principal with the student until we could get ahold of him, and the office was continuing to call the parents. We didn't release to. I didn't call a neighbor. There was a couple of friends that said, oh, I could go, but they weren't on the list, so we didn't release.
Do you think that...
I felt like I contain... I, you know, I stayed unsupervised until we could get a parent.
But do you think that they're referring to leaving in the ambulance, as opposed to just like releasing them to somebody who would go and provide that medical care? Do you think maybe that's the...
No, I mean, this is specific.
I think that's...
But if it's an emergency, the ambulance is going to take them regardless. If you get ahold of a parent, if it's a medical emergency, the only time they won't is if they feel like it's on the line, and they'll wait for a parent if you make contact. But they won't sign off if they're concerned and there isn't a parent there, or somebody that is a nurse that they feel like they can... Because they're basically giving... I mean, they're liable the moment they entertain and they're on campus and dealing with it, so...
I just think that's what the parent is concerned about, is if there is more of like an ambulance call as opposed to being released to somebody if it's in a medical emergency. Because, like you said, you're going to call that ambulance, not just release them to whoever.
Yeah.
Yeah, every... I mean, every effort is made.
Well, the parents sign a waiver, right? I mean, you have the parents sign a waiver for emergency services. Yeah, we've had some parents that haven't wanted that, and that's fine. I mean, you know, then they sign off with the EMTs, saying they're taking responsibility. But we have had situations, I think it's happened to me twice, where once with a grandma that came in, and she had a heart attack while she was in the building, and we couldn't get ahold of anybody. And so, and I didn't want to leave her by herself, I mean, she was totally out of it, so I went with her, and then we had a student, same thing, and I just got in the ambulance and went with them until we could get ahold of a primary care person to take care of the grandma and the parents of the student, so...
So, here, under the P, because I pulled up the P, because the regular policy doesn't really include much. But prior authorization from the custodial parent or guardian is required before releasing a student into someone else's custody unless an emergency situation justifies a waiver. And we talked a little bit about what those emergency situations are, but I don't remember them.
I mean, I can think of, we've had situations where parents have had to jump on a flight because there was, you know, an emergency situation with someone somewhere else where they had to get, and so they are calling to say so-and-so, you know, Grandma's going to come pick up so-and-so today, we're excusing this, you know, the neighbor's picking up the student, that kind of a thing. But, you know... But I will tell you, we don't have any Evan assistants here. Most of the time, the people that they're releasing the student to are the... One of the emergency contacts, they're just calling to tell us that it's going to be that way, so that the teacher knows. But more often than not, they're part of the emergency contact team that the parents fill out. It's rare that it's an outside person, but that's my understanding, but again, I'm not on the... In the office every day, so I don't know that for sure, but...
But usually, in that instance, they add them to the emergency contact.
Right, yeah.
So, if they're saying, you know, Grandma Joey, because she's in town, is going to take care of this kid over the week, and they ask the parents to add them to that.
Yeah. And because it's all digital, parents will add, and then say, I've just added this person, and they're going to go home with this person today.
And that person has their ID scanned in there before they can take the child with them, so...
If it's early, not if it's not.
Yeah, sometimes it's not.
If it's at release time, then we don't have IDs scanned.
Right, that's... We talked about that, because that's where it's normally during school hours.
True, yeah.
And so, end of the day looks different, because this is talking about during school hours, where you're going to have that little bit checked out.
Yeah.
Okay. More descript, okay. Seems the same as current, very vague. Not sure what is going to be determined by the superintendent. Well, I think it said procedures. Great, great. Approve, approve. The current wording for this section defines that the school is responsible for the safety of the student, the draft does not. It seems a bit confusing, unless it was added in... Does it need to be two separate policies?
I think they're thinking that P is a policy and not a procedure.
Okay.
That's how I read that, but... Because this is kind of the process.
What does this one mark for, like, a medical release of a student, or?
No, what we've tried to get away from when we've done policy in years past is that, like, the policy itself is a standalone, and it's kind of an overview of expectations. And then if there's procedural things that you have to do, then we put it in a procedure, so... Because otherwise, it just gets really muddy, and there's a lot of narrative, and then you have five-page policies, and some people just want the nuts and bolts, and then the procedure has some of the additional pieces, so we've tried to separate those out, so it's more clear.
Okay, I think we're there. Over here, we took the sentence because it was above. So... What if instead we... There we go. So, I think, you know, you made a good point, the P, what it stands for, policy or procedure, I don't know that that's totally clear. So, is there... Is there a way of noting, so it is clear, that three fifty... Thirty-five fifty is policy, and thirty-five fifty P is... I just added procedure. The listed procedure, so is that...
Yeah, I thought it was a separate...
Yeah. I just added that, and it is... Okay, and so, if we just... Yeah, we just put it in the title each time, so this is procedures, and then the other doesn't...
Right.
And then, that way, that... I think that clears that up. And I do think that, under the policies and whatnot, there needs to be a descriptor that, you know, what if P stands for F, yeah. Yeah, there's some sort of definition.
Breaking of that, just from a system standpoint, so if we put a legend on the policy page, kind of denoting our forms, and when it's a form, it's a procedure, or it's a policy. My question is, is if you change this one to include procedure on your P, do you want us to go through every procedure policy and just add procedure in the title?
We should be, yeah.
Do we have to bring that to the board? Or we can... And can we do the same thing for forms?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just clerical.
So, we're going to add procedure in forms to anything that's an F or a P?
Slightly confused by the wording, does this mean a teacher cannot ask a student to leave the classroom if they are being disruptive to the learning environment? No, is this nothing to do with that?
I think when you change, go to releasing, that clarified that.
Okay, okay.
Is there a separate policy regarding that? That will...
The removal...
Like, for any issues, and somebody here thinking that?
It's the behavior one, it's thirty-three thirty.
Okay. Have we... Has that been revised?
Uh, we looked at it... I'm really proud of myself that I remember this.
Wow, I know. You didn't know, or impressed?
Uh, we looked at it at the end of last year.
I think so.
Like, last April or May or something.
It's already updated, then?
I mean, it... We... I think we've looked at it probably a couple of times, in... Since I've been on, working on policy.
Is it an annual one? I think it is, isn't it? Maybe not.
I don't...
So, I think changing removal to release helps solve all...
Yeah.
Because I was like, why are you removing a kid from school? What did they do?
Yeah, we're not, but others are.
You are right. It is... It's one of our annual policies, but we still haven't gotten to go on.
We're still...
So, it's one of those that has to be reviewed every year.
Okay. And has not yet this year.
It has not yet this year.
I think it's to the parents authorization.
How do you know the numbers in your head?
That one just stands out to me because I reference it all the time when principals call me.
That's true.
Because I try to just pull up the policy, so I'm not like, I mean, this is what we, you know, so...
And you can reference it.
I pull that one up a lot.
You spent a couple hours here.
Yeah.
All right, so, the language here, a teacher should not excuse a student from class to confer with anyone unless the request is approved by the principal is unclear. Please clarify, currently, I'm unsure what this means. So, that's actually within the...
Procedure?
It's not... It's what's in the procedure, so it's in the wrong space. That comment's in the wrong space.
So, if you go to P?
Okay, a second. No.
It's right there.
It says right here, a teacher should not excuse a student from class to confer with anyone unless the request is approved by the principal. So, over here on P... I don't think it even... It doesn't address anything here. No, it doesn't.
That's a really weird sentence.
It is a weird sentence.
Well, I think it's just, it's meant... It's in there to ensure that, you know, if some adult comes to the door and he's to talk to Joey, that the teacher is not letting them go out there to talk to him unless they know that this person's come from the office.
But we don't even let parents walk in.
I don't think anymore, that's kind of on the point, because nobody's coming in the hallway, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. Seems like an old piece from an old policy.
Yeah.
Before we had such a security.
So, should we strike out?
Mm-hmm.
I would say, yeah.
Because now, if... I mean, we do have, like, first thing in the morning, and we have kindergarten parents and first grade parents, that sometimes will walk their kid down, but then all the staff is in the hallway, then the moment school starts, we... Nobody's allowed to walk down the hallway without going through Raptor, without your ID, you have to have a badge, so like, that doesn't happen ever.
The parent walking him down anymore, that doesn't even happen without them going through the office first.
Right, I mean, they still go through the office, but we... There is...
They still have to have a...
Mm-hmm, right.
Well, then, does it have anything to do with releasing the student to leave the building?
Yeah.
No.
It's more like, I brought my kid's medicine, and they need to take this, so you're...
Right, but we make them meet at the office.
They meet at the office, but then that's just more...
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with removal or release.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I think I'd like to see the Policy forty-four hundred before responding to these questions, because this policy does not mention the fact that CPS has a habit of taking children out of their classes to interview them without parental permission. Okay? Same answer as above, format looks nice, but it adds a lot more words than the other draft. Okay. Okay, so, can we follow up with her, please?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, yes, good, good. No, no. I don't see the need to make changes unless you share where and how it is failing.
And can I just ask a question about that comment, nineteen? I would like to talk to Megan about that counsel, because I feel like we've... There's been a... It's blanket access, and I feel like I'd like to have clarity now with new rental laws, and just as things have changed, what the parameters are with CPS?
Right, and I believe she is looking into that, because on forty's...
With the...
Megan.
Well, it wasn't CPS, it was health and welfare.
That is CPS, yeah.
So, we're already on that?
Yeah, but it was on a different policy.
It was on the forty-four hundred policy.
Did you already reach out to her and ask that question?
Yeah, it was the one that we had had the question on.
We didn't talk about CPS, we just talked about law enforcement, so do you mind if I call for CPS specifically?
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
That would be perfect.
So, I don't think we talked about... She just talked about law enforcement with us.
She did, because there was a specific highlight in that policy.
Yeah, and when I said CPS.
Yeah.
The first initial email that I sent to her, I asked those two questions about law enforcement and about health and welfare.
And I feel like the only... I only received an answer about law enforcement. Did you get a different one? Okay.
No.
So, I just want to hear what she has to say.
Please. Because, yeah, because the policy actually contradicted itself, because it's saying, we're never going to leave your child alone, and then it's like, but CPS can say, we want that kid, and you can't be there. So, there was not... No law that we found that gave CPS that right to usurp the district's authority, so that was kind of where we were at. We need clarification from her.
Just enough to go through more than I did.
No, no.
Yeah.
I don't see the need to make changes unless you share where and how it is failing. Okay, I'm sorry there. Where can I find Policy forty-four ten?
Yeah, I remember that.
What circumstances am I okay with? When she takes my child out of school without my presence? Responses above are related to the lack of information about the problem. These policy changes are trying to solve, but the original policy is adequate from my perspective. Okay. What are you... What are you asking with this email? I have no idea what's in the email. Okay, well, so we've gone through those.
What is this email?
Do you think we have addressed the main concerns, revising the policy to releasing a student, and then the procedures for releasing a student, which is specific to, you know, basically, you have to let us know who you are, and you have to be on the list. With the exception of law enforcement, that will be hosed to Policy forty-four ten.
Okay.
Makes much more sense now.
Okay, changing the releasing is a huge...
It just... That removal was too strong.
Yeah.
Okay. And there was not really much else. And here, we actually kept saying released, so... All right.
So, thirty-five fifty and thirty-five fifty P can go to the board before we need?
Yeah, with the comments, so they can understand that we changed it from removal to release.
Oops, with the comments from the survey?
Yes, except I took down the...
The agenda?
Yeah. The thingy I clicked on. Perfect. You're so amazing. All right. Moving on to forty-two ten, draft policy. I believe we made our way through this. Minimal changes. Okay, forty-two ten P, what is the ITRD draft policy?
That's the one that Rebecca and Jessica...
Oh, gotcha.
Remember, where we were shifting back and forth? So, I think you started working off of this one.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you go back up to the agenda really quickly, go to the bottom of this box, keep going. So, there's the joint powers agreement. Rebecca said, or Rebecca said that this looks really similar to the MOU. This one was just in ninety-nine, and then they switched the language to MOU in two thousand and seven or eight, or whatever, so those are the things that you asked me to bring. So, this is a cleaner version, but if you still look at the date, it's two thousand and seven, so we have a ninety-nine, but she said it's essentially an MOU. They just, at that point in ninety-nine, called it a joint agreement.
Okay, so, based on that, we should... Change that to MOU. Why is this not in the...
Oh, you have to give her access. Do you have access to this?
Oh.
Yeah. I have access right now, let me see. Nope, I don't have access either.
Can I ask, what is, like, an example of a government entity with the joint powers agreement? Is that like for election day and stuff like that, or what is that?
This is talking about, like, so we have an MNU, an MOU with the city of Rathrum, so Park and Rex can use our facilities.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would we ever enter into an MOU with like the city of Hayden or the city of Post Falls?
Um, I mean, we. If the board approved it, you could. Um, just so you know, Michelle, you were working off the forty-two-ten P, the other one, last time.
I will.
So you'll have to refresh, but you have access now.
Okay.
So.
So we'll hold on though.
Can you go back up? Right there, that's the draft you were working on. We did, this was the printed copy, the J D R D. We have the printed copy in front of you, but the one that you made all the changes to was on this one.
Okay.
So I just don't want you to double do another one.
Okay. No worries. So I suppose, how did, so did you just like copy and paste what was here over there?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and then you made it painful.
Cause we, well, we didn't wanna have to change anything of your, your original one.
Then I'll just stick with this one. Yes, and so thank you for giving me access, cause I'm like, well, we could access it last time, like, you know, now. Alright, so we'll take that off. Oh, no, you just changed the, oh, no, we didn't. Okay, that's right. Okay, so we're gonna get rid of that. Um, we are going to change.
I can't think of a scenario where we'd enter with Hayden or them because, um, the buildings they typically wanna use, um, are in town. And so it would be the city of, I mean, I guess they could ask them to give them permission, but.
Okay, so we'll change that to MOU.
They have it on elementary schools and those.
Okay.
Oh.
So we'll change that to the memorandum of understanding.
Do we wanna have a period there? Did you like do anything to?
Well, I didn't line out this period.
Oh, okay. I just couldn't see it.
Okay.
It's a little one.
So did we have any other, okay, city, county, or other public agencies?
I think we have joint powers a couple times.
Do we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I keep doing that.
I have a question that probably was discussed at a different meeting, but maybe not, maybe I'm just kidding. Um, how does that work with election day? I know there's been discussion with, I guess, obviously that may be big group wise with district admin or anything, but what does that look like with elections?
We are not allowed to, um, say no. Um, we have been directed and, um, I don't think anybody has been in favor of having it just with the way the political standing is, but we have tried to get them removed from our buildings and we have not been able to get that done, so Lisa actually took to the board to change the calendar to get, uh, on that election day, we're gonna have a teacher work day, so we're not, we're not gonna be teaching and it's.
Oh, wonderful.
So we don't have, cause it's, you know, we've always said this, it's the craziest thing. The buildings are locked down except for that one day and it's free access, and so it's just, becomes a safety, so, um, but, um.
And that's a state legal piece that we are bound to, okay?
So, so this is our workaround.
Okay, yeah.
And we talked about, you know, somebody said can we move that to our PD day, but then we didn't feel like that would be safe for teachers to have everybody in essential, you know, cause any of the places that could hold, um, a PD for all the staff, then you're, it's an open building, so trying to just figure out ways to keep all the staff and the students and everybody feel safe.
Okay.
So it'll essentially be like a teacher work day kind of a thing?
I don't know the specifics exactly how it's gonna, I wasn't a part of the conversation, the sense of what, uh, what they're calling it, but they're trying to have that be a non-student day.
I'm sure students will look back.
Yeah.
In November, it's right around, it's right, and in the trimester, so, I mean, it could be a teacher work day.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't attend the calendar meeting, so I don't know what they decided to do. I don't remember, Michelle didn't remember what they called it, but just trying to get it to a non-student day, so we will have to deal with the.
Yeah, no, that hasn't come before.
More than it's gonna come.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Look forward to hearing that.
Yeah, so, just so that we're.
Would be much easier, I mean, if it was the staff, that we could still, we still could lock down a certain portion of the building that would just keep evolving, going on a small portion. And then possibly wouldn't have hundreds of kids moving parts to deal with.
Yeah, well, and, I mean, you have to be able to find lunch and so the kids are older and people have.
So does that mean that, like, churches can't rent out the building, or is that just saying that, sorry, um, the religious organization where you have it crossed out, is that saying, cause I know like in the past, Real Life has rented Timberlake and Health Services on Sundays. So is that crossed out just because of the fact, like, religious organizations don't need to be addressed specifically makes it liable, or what's the?
So the Establishment Clause basically says that if we open it to one, we have to open it to all.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
So, I mean, there's been, since there's been some pushback of like, you know, we have some political entities that wanna use our buildings, but if we've opened it to anybody, we don't get to say no, whether you are either side of the fence, the moment we've said yes, and we have allowed facility use, we have to allow everyone to have access to facilities if they meet our requirements, right? But we don't get to pick and choose.
So we're saying no more, like, renting out?
No, this is just not calling it out.
Oh, okay, okay. It's open to everyone, not just religions.
Yep. But, uh, you know, if a caucus wanted to happen on either side, we don't have the ability to say no if they meet the requirements for. You know, our facility use, we don't get to just say, we get, we, we're okay with this one, but not this one, it'd be equal. You have to, it has to be equal.
It was for.
Okay, so. No, no, bring it back.
Why, I guess, I'm just kinda using the devil's advocate.
Yeah.
Why would it be, if it's all or none, why are, it's, just, and I'm thinking through this, I'm saying, is it, why isn't it just, why is it not none? Instead of, or does that just make it too complicated?
Well, then we wouldn't let anybody use our facility, so sports team, I mean.
Yes, I guess I'm thinking.
You don't get to say, like, there's categories. It's, if you open it, you have to open it.
Okay. We can't say like, okay, no for certain, no for politics, no for religious, and that's why we're getting rid of the religious piece. It's for everybody.
Right. So like, as a building principal, I will tell you, when I had groups that wanted to come and you like use the building, I did say no to almost everything because I didn't, I just felt like if I can't control it, I didn't want, I just didn't want anyone using it, but I'm in elementary school, so it's easy to say that. But, you know, we didn't have sports teams, we haven't carpeted a gym, nobody's using our facility. So, but like boys and girl scouts, they would wanna come, which I super support that, but if I said yes there, I'd have to say yes to, the moment you say yes, you have to.
Like you said, the caucus or whatnot.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So we're leaving religious organizations in it, in the policy. Are we striking, that we're telling them what they can use the facilities for?
Our caucus is completely.
I thought we were striking it out because they told me to say that.
So they fall into no category?
Well, it's just that they're, it's a non-district fee-based event. I think she feels like it, it fits under either bullet, the first or the second bullet, or the third bullet, like it's all, that's encompassing.
Fee-based event if it's district.
But it could be a non-school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what she meant.
None.
Or I think it falls up in actually three, it's a nonprofit groups or.
Non-profit groups, makes more sense.
Yeah.
So it's redundant.
So then it would be a category three, not a category four?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got lines. Was there more that needed to be addressed in this? Cause I thought we had made it through.
You, we did, we made it all the way through.
Right.
Um, the only thing that we ended with is you wanted to just do one quick check of all those blues that had been at the bottom, cause remember, we were taking the blues from the bottom and plugging them back in, which is what Jessica and everybody. Which are on that one paper that we have highlighted, with little sticky notes. Do you still have that one?
I do, it's in my car, I forgot to bring it.
Do we have another one in here with sticky notes on it?
You just wanna do that little check.
They're all, they're all the. Oh, they're all new ones?
Yeah.
I can, I'll just go to your.
The one I gave you access to?
Yeah. Go to.
That one right there, the IG. This would be nice to have the double screen instead of the split screen. And the only other thing that's off specific to this is just having a completely separate fee schedule that's not attached to a policy.
Right. Do we know for certain that, like, all of your things that you? I think so, because you were making the comments.
Yeah, they made the comments in the.
Yeah, so all, yeah, so all the comments are.
Okay. Well, I just, cause like, um, where is this, category four? Club sporting events or tournaments, adult tournaments or events. Okay, so we elaborated more, okay.
Some of the other discussion last week was about, you know, even the seventy-five percent of our kids, or if it's a hundred percent of our kids, if it's requiring additional staff, if it's, you know, if there's supplies, you like, if it's a tournament type thing and you're in the building for a long period of time, then they're required to, you know, there's fees attached to that, patrol or paper, pay for towel, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm, so.
Yeah, so dispensers, yeah.
So I think we, fees rental charges shall cover costs of wages of school personnel involved and utilities. The board shall review the fee schedule annually. Fees may be waived by the superintendent in consideration of services rendered by the public institutions or nonprofit organizations in direct support of public school students or staff. Fees will be invoiced by the sponsoring organization whose name appears on the application showing how responsible, um, for any and all damage to the school property and equipment. Okay. So. This isn't anywhere. Use of the school price will be denied when, in the opinion of the superintendent or the board, use, uh, may be construed to be solely for commercial purposes when there is probability of damage or injury to school property, or when the activity is deemed to be improper to hold in school buildings, or if it conflicts with any federal state. But I thought.
I feel like Lisa would say that that's pretty ambiguous because it's pretty subjective and just be careful.
See, here we're saying profit-making activities, that they're allowed to rent, but down here, we're saying.
Right.
But we can tell you no.
Mm-hmm.
Like.
And, um, districts have gotten in trouble for this very thing, picking and choosing what they've said yes and no to.
Right. What does Jessica say over here?
I think, I feel like it's such a, a great area, because like, on one hand, you want to be like, oh yes, come have church here, and then all over here, you have Planned Parenthood going like, hey, we wanna come in, and then you have, you know, this other, like, it, it gets so tricky.
So. Yeah, I don't know what the, I keep just looking to the wrong one. I don't know what the statute says.
Does this one?
Mariana's not here.
Um, the ISBA language.
It is the ISBA language.
Okay.
Um, so I think I'll do it.
And is this a policy that you would like Megan to possibly review specific through the lens of the, um, Establishment Clause?
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea. Um, cause I.
I'll have her do forty-two-ten and forty-two-ten P since they just naturally.
Go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Cause we've never had it on the policy before, cause it's, my thought, we can't just pick and choose who we let in.
Well, and it's.
If they fit into a category.
I mean, if it looks like there's any scope of discrimination, then it's a problem, so.
Right.
It might be worthwhile for Megan to look at this and just give us some feedback, cause maybe there's some stipulations that we just don't know about.
Right, um.
I'd be interested to see what her feedback is specific to, to the political aspect of that.
Cause I believe we can deny when it's in conflict with school, um, school.
Any school function, we can deny, yes. Like, what do you mean in conflict?
Well, like, if someone wants to rent up the common area for John Brown and John Brown is doing the Dr. Seuss thingamabob.
For sure.
Well, they can't do that.
We stupid.
Because we stupid. But if it is open, we cannot deny.
Right.
Because remember, then it becomes a public, every playground, the same.
Well, see, and that's why I think under this right to decline use, we could reemphasize, you know, the school takes precedence over everything. Therefore, if you are choosing to, you know, pick a day when the school has precedence, you will be declined. So that's like the only time we can decline, but, um.
I think the reason she had put that in there was those instances that we had talked about last week where it feels like people were, like, trying to bribe us or threaten us, like, what is our? Well, and I would wonder, and this is where I think it would be good. Denial. Again, is. Attachment. I mean, I have been at our schools during election day and, I mean, people are throwing stuff and cussing at you, so at what point does it become a situation where if there's a safety and there's a control issue using the public facilities? You know, if you know that there's gonna be something being held at the building and it's gonna create, like, is that enough for us to, because we're able to do that if it's a, if it's gonna have a harmful impact to the educational environment? I get kids aren't here, but it still has a, there's some harm, so.
They don't have the right to come in and destroy anything within the building, whether it be with their words or their actions.
But if you know it potentially causes not a riot, but may him outside, is there any, cause, I mean, I've been out there with signs and stuff, throwing, being cussed at.
I understand.
There are new ways, we say, like, this needs to be a different community building, but schools are not the place for that. There's other public facilities they can use.
We, I do know specific to election day, we have reached out and we've been told no, but I just, in this one, it's the same concept, you know, out, so there's other times where buildings can be used and it's not an election day, so what does that look like? I just, there might be some, I would just like legal counsel to give some guidance on that.
Use the school while school is in session?
No, it's outside, yeah. But, you know, you think about that, it could be, you know, there's something happening at Lakeland High School, well, tell me when Lakeland High School's not being used. So you still have kids in the building.
Yeah.
And teachers that work outside of contract hours.
Exactly.
And then with their families, if their kids are with them. I mean, even if kids aren't involved at all, it's just a safety, we should be able to work outside of contract hours whenever we want without worrying about anything like that.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so I just.
I'll reach out to Megan tomorrow.
I don't know. I might, you might have to do it on the phone.
Yeah. What's that?
I have, right, spiritually kind of.
Oh, okay, okay.
Welcome to my world right now.
I just put this little caveat on there, cause I don't want her to think, what are you people thinking? It's like, no, we're not, the blue is ISBA. It's like, no, we're not, the blue is ISBA. Okay, so that gets through there and there, so we have.
So this is the fee schedule, and these are all the ones, we do not have any, so this draft is ISBA's draft because we don't have them, so. Um, so there are literally one and the same, but I just, this was the way of showing you.
Thank you.
Before we.
Go on to that, I was just curious, with the, um, earlier, we crossed out the joint powers of agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And is that all, that language always replaced with the MOU?
Mm-hmm.
So I just.
Did we miss a point?
There's, there's one in F under fees and fees for use in facilities, category one. So I just, I was wondering if that would be changed.
No, you're on the right one.
This one, okay.
Oh, no, it's the P one that you were on.
It's.
So it's this one. This one you're on.
F, yeah, F. This one, I'm looking at.
Go a little lower.
Where it has, now those are all struck out, but the copies that we have.
There are some in the blue part, perhaps, where the blue parts are.
So below that, in, under category one.
Head up.
Which seems to be struck out there, so.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not struck out here on the copy that we have, so I didn't know if that was.
They have the ones that Rebecca worked on.
Oh, okay.
Just because there's so many copies.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to.
No, thank you for having us double check, so, yeah, I just did a.
So all this is actually struck out?
Right.
Or is that re?
This. Are these from the last week, or were these printed out based off of the new, with the work that was done last week?
They were, I printed them today.
Okay. So I'm curious why there's, why you guys don't have this struck out language.
All I printed out was the one that Rebecca and, um, did, because it's a law paper and it gets confusing.
I agree with you, I agree.
But we were working on the other draft, so I think that's why it's fine, I mean, it just.
Okay, so you printed out the Rebecca one?
Yes.
Not the one we were working on?
Correct draft.
Okay, so that's why you guys were all striking. Okay, now I understand where it all came from.
Onto the fee schedule.
Here we go. So, we have, um, F two, F one. Um, this is F two. F three, facility use agreement, okay, does, um, Jessica have recommendations on what she wants the board to consider with regard to these?
As far as money?
Um, she's going to be bringing that too, she doesn't have it ready yet.
Okay, so as far as these fees.
That's what is current on there.
Okay, but she's bringing.
I think her comment is right there, the budget hearing.
Recommended to move from the forty-two-ten P to update fee schedule with annual budget hearing due to the anticipated increase in free to five percent. Okay. So.
So I guess my question is, based on that, is it just something that at the start of the school year, we're looking at this and it's not, like, we don't have, we haven't ever had an F one, like, it was part of just the policy? And so do we need to have an F one, or is it something separate and we put it in as part of the building, the budget piece? Or it would fit somewhere else and not, and so it's not, and does that make sense?
Sort of. Personally, I think we need to have a form that reflects, because what I don't like is the only way you can access what the fees are is if you fill out the form to rent the facility. I think for transparency, the public needs to know, well, if you want to rebuild this, this is what it's going to cost.
And that's why I had them had it to our facility use.
Okay.
I was just aiming it on the webpage.
It wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, so right when, um, they go to reserve facility use, that's what they see first, is the fees. Because that was a big question all the time.
Yeah, how much is it going to cost, and you could never get to it, and Brian didn't want to put it out there for everyone to see, so, um, but we should have it out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And forty-two-ten F one, just so you know, is, um, is one of the required policies annually.
Okay.
But it's just F one.
Right.
And, um, so if we're going to do, if you feel like F two, F three, this whole thing has to be, then we just need to delineate that, because right now, it's just the form and it's Form one, the only thing legally required.
Okay.
For annual review.
Well, I don't think that community use of school facilities would need to be an annual review, but the fees absolutely, because I know we've tried to.
I didn't know if you want the procedures or some of the additional forms that are attached, there's just so much to this one, so I just noted, we just need to define what.
In all fairness, I think it would be who, um, the athletic directors and the CFO to review the policy and procedure, and if they feel that there is uh, activity, behavior, whatever that's going on that's not being addressed properly within the policy, then they need to bring that forward and say, hey, the board needs to look at this.
Yeah.
Um, so it stays on the radar of the people that it impacts the most. Um, same with Rebecca, I mean, if she's having problems or whatever, then bring it back, but the, the fees, I think have to come back annually because of the budget.
Absolutely should.
Yeah. Because we, I, I've advocated for a few years in raising some of those fees and keep getting shot down, so. So.
Are you thinking you just want to put this one on hold until Rebecca can bring it to you guys, which is what her recommendation is?
Yeah, that would probably be best. And I'm trying to understand, the blue is from ISBA, right, okay. So what we have up here is pretty well.
That's what we have.
What we have, okay.
Yeah.
So if you confirm, like, what, like, we are getting a field house, so that should be added.
Okay.
Um, if there's things down here that you're like, well, we don't say that in there, so we don't have that, should we have it? Just toss it up there and then get rid of the book.
Okay.
Because it's very annoying to have to bounce around and try and figure out what we're looking at.
Okay.
I have no problem with you guys doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
So we'll just put this one on hold, um, until she can do it.
That's totally.
But, um.
Can we change the JHS to M, like, middle school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, no.
No, absolutely.
Well, in your full first column, should probably be MOUs now, it's a JP, JP's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So you get to make those cute little changes. Thanks, Rebecca.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, so middle school field, whatever. Um, but the field house, yes, definitely needs to be added, and I would, I'm sure Jessica's going to check in with Ryan and Jimmy, because I understand Lakeland's in the same process, but, um, what do they, you know, what's it going to?
What are they thinking?
Yeah, exactly. Um.
Yep.
Okay, so this is hold harmless agreement. We've never had.
We've never had, yeah.
And this is all ISBA language?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we've never had this, but my only recommendation would be is that we put, we change it to community, like, we put it, the hold harmless agreement, because I think when you look at it, just when they're all named the same, it's too.
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um. You know, instead of us spending time weeding through this.
Do you want Jessica to look at it?
Yeah, because I would assume we have a hold harmless agreement somewhere. I cannot believe that we've been letting people rent facility, our facilities without this.
I have not run across one.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's not there.
I agree, I agree. Um.
I will ask her.
Yeah, we need to find out what we currently have language-wise, and then if we don't have anything, um, I would just make sure that this is run through legal. Because I would just want to make sure we've CYA'd all over the place. Um.
Well, I guess my recommendation would be, even if we currently have one, it's probably really old, so we have this either the new form or the old form should go through legal?
I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah. And then this is the facility use agreement, but we have it online.
Yeah, so when somebody initially signs up to use the ML schedules, they fill it out and create their account.
Okay.
Some, and I can double check with Jessica that all of this language is in there.
Okay, and is this, I guess what we need to find out is if someone were to come in and say, I want to rent the facility, but I'm never going to use a computer, so I want to fill it out.
I usually help them.
Okay.
I'll do the computer part for them as they sit.
So we don't have to technically have this form.
Right, as long as all of that language is in our.
Right. Well, I don't know what the language is, we haven't, like, reviewed it. No alcohol, tobacco, or other drugs be sold or consumed on the premise by the requesting organization or individual or any of its employees, patrons, agents, or members, that no illegal games of chance or lotteries be permitted. Except we have a statement in there about bingo. We got to have the bingo, that no functional alteration of, come on in, um, of the premises or functional changes in the use of such premises be made without specific written consent of the district, that adequate supervision be provided by the requesting organization or individual to ensure proper care and use of the district facilities, that the organization and participants should comply with policy forty-two-ten, forty-two-ten P and all other district policies and procedures, for physical distancing and all other federal, state, and local district health measures in effect, such as wear a mask?
Yeah, no.
Okay, rent or deposit. Okay, do we have this information somewhere, I mean?
There's some really similar parts to it in part D of.
There is, in our original.
Original.
Yeah, but then you said it's part of the application process, right?
Part of it is, Brian set that up, so I don't know what is actually written in there, and so, um, I I have to log in from a different ML account to see.
All right, well.
Well, that might be the one Michelle was looking for, sticky notes.
Oh, you did, no, you're good, you're totally good. I have a sticky note one, I left it in the car. Um, my bad. Okay, so, I think we should review this process and conditions to make sure that whatever we've got going on on the website.
Yeah, I think you should have the language that you want, and then I will make sure that this is on the application.
Okay. All right, so, one, does anybody have any qualms with? That no alcoholic beverages, tobacco, or other drugs be sold or consumed on the premise by the requesting organization or individual or any of its employees, patrons, agents, or community members. Sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, that no illegal games of chance or lotteries be permitted.
Is that excluded bingo?
I don't know, because we said in the.
So it says in D, the one that we, the wording on that one says, except for properly licensed bingo and or raffles for the sole purpose of fundraising or civic charitable purposes, gambling shall not be permitted. So we have similar wording with the exceptions in the previous policy that we did last week.
Okay.
We should probably add the, the people there, so if you go up to the P.
Okay, under D, you say?
If it's the same as our paper copy, it might not be, but it was D online.
Yeah. I've seen that.
So our third bullet.
Okay. Third bullet?
No, on yours, it's now one, two, three, four, and six.
Okay, um, okay.
Just after the no concession.
Right. So what if?
I feel like a ton of what you were reading off that one is similar to what's here, and it's, yeah.
Okay.
Just word slightly differently.
So, let's say. How about? Gambling is prohibited. Spell that would help.
Except for properly licensed.
Do we really need to add the, for the sole purpose of fundraising or civic charitable?
I would put that in there, only I filled this out last year for senior parents, and we didn't have like heads or tails and different things like that, so just as an explanation for those of us, like, as a parent, like, you know, when I filled that, I'm like, oh, I probably would have questioned that, like, you know what I mean? Like, I was probably hauling through it last year when I was doing it, but, but I I do think it's good to keep it in there so that there aren't questions about that. I guess to save yourself from having people further inquire and like, but we plan to do the fifty-fifty and do raffles for fundraising, it's in there.
Yeah, it's already in there.
So maybe to save the headache of people double checking, yeah.
Okay. And to say licensed, does that mean, like, turkey bingo that we do at one of our schools, that they, their PTU would have to be licensed to do that, or is that PTU is part of, and they're not renting the build, they're not going through this process?
Actually, PTU is actually considered a category two.
Yeah, and they have raffles and auction items, and John Brown for tomorrow night.
Well, raffles are allowed as are properly licensed bingos.
So, so, but, but the licensed bingo, so where is that, what do they mean by licensed bingo?
Right, I was thinking of like for Battle for the Capitol.
I mean, that license, like, where do you attain a license to play?
Why do you have to say properly licensed, why can't it just be?
I think.
No, I hear you, but I do think that there's something, because I ran into this when I was running the club. There's something about, and that was a hundred years ago, but, um, there's something about the licensing required within state law, I mean, you can't just gamble, because that's what it is, I mean, bingo's gambling.
Even if you're not exchanging money?
Well.
Like, you're winning a turkey, or?
Well, you're not paying to play.
Pie?
You're not paying to play.
Yeah, you're not.
They're not paying to play, it's just play for fun and.
Right, that's the differentiation.
At our family days, they're technically possibly paying to play because they're buying the ticket for the fundraiser.
Usually, that's what they do, yeah.
The tickets, they are paying.
Right.
So five, nine, and ten license only charitable nonprofit organizations can, and they go have raffles. That's another thing.
Okay, charitable nonprofit.
So.
Bingo license has passed through that.
Okay, there's legal on this people.
Bingo licensing requirement. If you are starting a bingo game, you may not need to apply for a license. If you will make over ten thousand dollars annually, you need to apply for a bingo license.
Yeah.
Now, most.
And our brains.
New fundraiser.
I don't know, some of those PTUs, man, they make dollars.
I don't think they make it on the bingo.
Okay. Um.
So can we, how do we reflect that?
Something about charitable, or what did you say was the wording Shannon with that one?
Charitable and nonprofit.
Like nonprofit or something like that?
I can't write it, like.
But I think that people will think if they are going and there, there's money.
Does this include, like, the Scholastic Book Club too, or is that the, well, the PTU runs that too?
But that's not gambling.
That's true. But they are taking money and somebody's making a profit.
But that's all covered in other.
True, yeah, but that's not, yeah.
Isn't it, can it still be deemed nonprofit where your, people might still be like charging, I mean, and, and you might still win gift cards or whatever it is that you win, I mean, these things, I mean. like charging, I mean, and, and you might still win gift cards or whatever it is that you win, I mean, these things, I mean. Can you not include that in there except for nonprofit bingo?
Five oh, what is it?
Five oh three.
Five oh.
C or whatever it is, five oh three C.
C statute, C statute, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Using.
I know bingo's like.
But then we have to change it on the other one too. Cause over here.
Yep, it's where you copied it.
Mm-hmm. So Shannon, what are we saying it's gonna be? Only with your verbiage.
I just, just to emphasize from the, I know lottery, nonprofit, or charitable organizations.
Do not have to have licenses?
No.
Okay.
No, it just says bingo and raffle, or bingo and raffle can only offer.
Properly licensed bingo and or raffles for fundraising for civic or charitable.
Well, okay, but I don't, so nonprofits and charitable organizations can gamble, is that what you're telling?
They can do bingo or raffles.
Okay, okay. So gambling is prohibited.
Yes.
Except for nonprofit or charitable organizations.
For bingo and raffle games.
Supervising, how, how would you put it?
Couldn't you just put gambling is prohibited, and then you could just put something for properly licensed bingo and or raffles? And then you could put exception would just be the nonprofit or charitable organizations, just underneath?
Gambling is prohibited, exception.
Bam.
Nonprofit organizations can offer bingo and raffles?
Offer bingo or raffles.
Can offer bingo and raffles?
I think Brady and I are progressives, so. Sit here like this. This is my world, right?
Three pairs. Usually tough.
So what if we changed it to read this way? Except for the way I can read now, is that nonprofit and charitable organizations can gamble.
You could say bingo exceptions, bingo slash raffle exceptions.
Like that.
That's hilarious.
Exceptions, nonprofit organizations, charitable organizations. And licensed. So is that clear?
That's clear.
Okay, what's that?
Change this on the other one too.
Yeah, we probably should. Why is this under? Exceptions, all right, so. Here we are. That no functional alterations of the premises or functional changes in the use of such premises be made without specific written consent of the district. What would be a functional alteration or functional change?
I would think that like when you're in commons, if they were messing with something on the stage, or they're messing with the lighting, or they were changing the.
Moving furniture.
Around, moving furniture. Okay. They're not returning it.
Cause the other, that one that we referenced before, it talks about posters, banners, all those things, making sure that it's been removed from the walls and they're not leaving behind.
Right.
Things for, if you ended up taking it down, if you put it up to spot damage on the walls.
You're leaving things as you found.
So like what we typically have done when there's ongoing, we take a picture of what the classroom looked like with the idea that then it needs to match.
Okay.
Well, in the original part of this, what it says, they shall not post any material on wall, so it's more specific in that, but it's that same idea, fences.
To me, that is specific to protecting the wear and tear.
For sure.
That adequate supervision be provided by the requesting organization or individual to ensure proper care and use of the district facilities.
So who is the adequate supervision, is that the coach? Because we don't have staff in there.
I'm reading that this is that when they're submitting their facility use, so like for example, if somebody wanna use Betty Kiefer, they're gonna run for football teams on that, that they have adequate supervision.
Yeah, it's not, it's not us, it's them.
Yeah.
But you're checking, like if you're gonna run for teams, how many coaches, are you having parents? Like, you're not gonna have a hundred kids that are just gonna destroy things because there's not enough supervision.
Which, from what I gathered from last week, happens sometimes with tournaments, especially when they're in the building and there's an overflow of excess and, you know, we need to put boundaries in place so that doesn't happen, or.
This is where you could, but you really wanna get kind of in the nitty gritty is defining what adequate supervision is. So if there's so many people, then there's expectation, there's many adults, or, you know, like.
Is there a requirement around bathroom and that kind of, like, I mean, you could, cause that's pretty ambiguous.
But if you're gonna have a speaker that brings a hundred people in versus, depending on the event, may require a different amount of staff to contain in one space and they're just sitting and listening, versus there's all kinds of movement between spaces and gyms and it's gonna bring in all adults, or there's gonna be kids and families, I mean, there's just.
So many dynamics.
Yeah.
But I know, and I'm sure high school deals with this on a regular basis Shannon, but we had situations where you know, there would be an event in the gym, the night custodians are there, and it's a non-school, like it's not, it wasn't a Betty Kiefer thing, but it was something else, but kids are running up and down the hallways and the custodians are saying, uh, can we bring the gate down because we just cleaned this room?
All the time, yeah, that's the only way they can get most of their work done is to pull the gates. Because there is not, I mean, so I don't know what that, when you say adequate supervision, does that mean that if you rented the gym, you have to be in the gym, or like that those kids shouldn't be?
I think that has to be part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Because they are, I mean, my office was in the cafeteria, and I had high schoolers running around in the cafeteria, and I said, you're supposed to be in the basketball game, not up here.
And some schools don't have gates. I have principals that will read out to me and they watch the video and they'll say, hey, this team was in here last night and they had students that were messing around in the cafeteria. And then I have to get ahold of that group and let them know that if this happens again, they're not gonna be able to use the facility, so.
What is it, like a one-strike policy that we just keep track of, is that what?
Um, we usually give them a good, a warning, you know, if it happens two or three, it's a three-strike policy currently.
Okay.
It's usually led with Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just think adequate is ambiguous, so.
It is.
Strike out that word, so that supervision be provided.
And then if there is damage, then it's like, well, it was up to you to know what supervision, right? Is that okay? We say it was, it's up to that group to know what is needed because it's going to depend on child age, it's going to be, depend on so much, like you said, listening to, staying listening or not.
This feels like it's really nitty gritty, but should there be something in there that says when you're requesting a facility that this is the scope of the request? So if you're asking for the commons, like, and I get that that means that there's access to the bathroom.
The closest bathroom.
Does it mean that you get access to the entire hallway and, because like when they're cleaning, they're not, the doors are open because they're cleaning that area, and so could kids potentially wander in the classrooms? And now we have confidential, cause it's your teacher desk, right? That, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's too in the weeds.
Well, under.
That's pretty in the weeds, the only way you could eliminate that is by making sure you've had a district staff member supervising everything.
If something was ruined, do you have cameras to verify that? I don't know.
Well.
All buildings don't have gates that you can put down.
Nope. Well, another problem we run into is like our Saturdays and Sundays, we don't have staff in the building. So we don't know necessarily until we come back and then you're like, what happened?
Right, but luckily we have to go and watch.
Yeah, then we're taking time to watch cameras to find out, this group didn't supervise your kids and they're not gonna have run of the building, cause once, yeah.
Well, and that's something we had talked to, to the activities about, is they had originally asked for us to have staff in the buildings, but then we'd have to deny everything because we just don't have the staffing.
So could we put something in there to the effect of your use will be monitored by cameras and damages or, you know, extra fees will be misuse, will be documented, kinda thing.
And do you define that, you know, students running rampant in the building as a, defined as a misuse?
Yeah, we would have to define that.
Or inadequate supervision, what does that mean?
Yeah, right.
Well, they're, they're renting the gym, they're not renting the building, right? So, well, no one should be in any other part of the building than the area they rented.
The gym and the bathroom, yeah.
And.
But Shannon, often.
There will be time.
Well, then that, maybe that language in there as well, is. Use is defined as what you.
Right, so that's, that's why I bring it up, because I feel like this is the time to maybe clean that up a little bit.
And yeah, maybe have a policy of like, yeah, you ruined this, I, I don't, I get we have a three-strike policy, but it's like, why? We shouldn't have it over four years, it's like, then we don't have documentation possibly or whatnot, it's like, no, you're out, and you're not gonna follow this rule.
Yeah, I like that narrowing down the scope too, just specifically what they're using, cause even in the gym, like at the middle school, and the kids go up on the stage, and that's where, you know, they keep a lot of the, the teachers keep a lot of their things, and then they come, there's jump ropes thrown around, or there's this, or there's that, they shouldn't even be in it. You know, there shouldn't be stuff moved.
Or, you know, you've done your beautiful wall decorations and the kids are just.
Yeah, posters or whatever is just, yeah, yeah.
Is it possible, we've talked about like add what supervision, like if you say, if this is a, like a youth activity, if there's gonna be kids, then it needs to be one adult per.
That's what I'm saying, like when you say that siblings and younger siblings must be supervised at all times, something like that.
I think that's super, that's big, cause you have.
That's where we have the most trouble is.
If you can watch your kids play.
Yeah.
And return to there.
Yeah, you have to, you have to be a parent to supervise your child.
But that's on whoever rented it, the Parks and Rec department, to be on the parents for that, for the guardians.
Yes, and that's where I have most of the communication back and forth, is, okay, so that scenario.
They're in charge of the children and the parents.
Unsupervised monitors.
Well, I jumped back over to our forty-two-ten P, which is the procedures. So I took out adequate, um, and just supervision shall be provided by the requesting organization or individual to ensure proper care and use of the district facilities. And then subcategorizing, no person shall be in any part of a building that has not been reserved.
Shouldn't it be is required by them? They should provide the, they're required to provide the supervision.
Are required to provide.
Rather than be shown provided.
Supervision must, is required. By the requesting.
This is a big one. We just need to, can we, like, we can have two hundred percent, so I can do it. I don't.
These are distance, you know?
I have, there's, I mean, there is this.
So rewording it to state.
Requesting organization, maybe they shall provide supervision. No person shall be in any part of the building that has not been reserved. Do you wanna say, you know, their siblings will be supervised at all times?
Or to say. Just say particular, uh, children must be supervised. Period. And that lead into them, also, I mean, that organization needs to emphasize to the parents who are bringing the kids, watch that.
Parks and Rec has been really good, when I call them, they immediately call the coach, and the coach usually knows what.
Exactly.
Who they're talking about, and so they've been really good about nipping it in the bud.
Do you think it needs to be clarified, not just children, but everyone under the age of eighteen? Cause I'm thinking of at like the high school, sometimes people are like, oh, but my kid's sixteen or seventeen, but they're still running amok.
So minors instead of children?
Yeah, minors maybe instead of just children.
See, my mind are children until they're eighteen.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, even, even where since video monitoring may occur, I think it should just be a flat-out, like occurs, because it happens regardless, we have the footage, so that way they know. Yes, that, that they're being videotaped, that's why they know they're being recorded.
Just so you guys know, the reason why Michelle put it may occur is because not every building has had a hundred percent cameras, but I think we're, like, we're in the gym, we don't have all of our spaces, like there were a locker room, we don't have a camera in the locker room.
But we're like, most.
But they're running up and down the hall, whereas you can't, or there.
But yeah, yeah, video monitoring.
Yeah.
Occurs, uh, yeah.
That's true.
Or occurs, yeah. Every building now has cameras, but you're right, there are definitely not every.
Cause then they know they are videotaped in specific areas, you know what I mean? And then if they acquire further, they acquire further us.
The district will, or does video monitor its buildings.
I think the way it's worded sounds good.
Do you want to change children into minors?
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Well, some parents need to be supervised too.
You can't go there. Those are weeds you don't wanna get into.
So are there other, um, other input that we should have caveats for this?
You guys, just to bring us all back, is there anything else that you feel like we wanna add as far as supervision goes under the qualifier of supervision?
Cause we're also using a video monitoring to, maybe damages didn't occur, but kids are running amok on the stage or whatever. Say something to, um, will be utilized to assess damages and.
Or misuse.
Monitor misuse.
Yeah, I agree, that should be in there.
Or lack of supervision.
I think misuse is better.
Yeah.
Cause that could entail lack of supervision, which you're not instructed to.
Yeah, right, right.
I think you're right, when they have access to the gyms and they have access to the stage and.
Well, in our case, some of it's the locker rooms and.
Right.
Those things that, I mean, they're gonna have access and that's fine, but if it's left a mess and they're not using it properly, then you're not gonna have access to future, whatever.
Right.
Right, I just think we need to maybe be a little bit tighter there, yeah.
Anything else that we can add to strengthen the expectations?
Do you, do you have anything in there about food?
Yes, we do.
Under. Well, there's no concessions or other items.
Doing soul.
And we also, on which one, where there's no gum or food. And we also want which one, where there's no gum or food. Yes. It was just pointed out to me, I'm sorry, I was a tardy party. I'm glad you came. I was in an I U P meeting.
The only way they can is if they have approval. And they put it in writing in their request.
Okay. So this is in the procedures.
Specific, says users are expected to restrict their use and activities to the times and places requested been approved in their application. So that is specifically in there above and beyond this other supervision piece, so I think it's very.
And we added that because we didn't want just blanket access.
So they would, you know, kind of double count what that looks like. You're limited and you should be supervised, yeah, in these areas.
Yes.
Is the animals something we wanna like, is that a can of worms that's worth opening or wait until needed?
Where are we at?
Um, in the, under, um, expectations, the service animals, it says except required, service animals. Is that something where we would want to prove with licensing? It's almost, it's, it's either from the bottom before special bulk from.
Right there.
Yeah, we're not allowed to require license.
Oh, okay, you're not. So it can be a socially emotional animal, which everybody has.
No. Socially emotional is not service.
You can't bring your.
Can you, those service animals as, or just, is that too much to?
What do you mean?
To bold it, to emphasize it.
I mean, yeah, I just feel like that would be abused as a socially emotional animal, but.
Yeah.
But maybe if that's not being abused and I just see it elsewhere, then I guess we don't need to require it. It's just that, you know. I know, it's a can of worms, it's like, I know.
Alright, so, um.
Am I getting your blood pressure? Sorry. I noticed how you're the section we're on.
Is there any statement in there that says, um, the facility shall be returned in the same.
Yes.
Manner that it was received.
However, I do think maybe we need to reemphasize it in a way that.
There was an expectation.
Yeah.
Cause I was out there over the weekend and we had to take pictures of facility before we started. Cause everything had to be exactly the way it was. Well, and I want to tell you when, uh, when one of the churches used Betty Keifer for a few years, it was the same thing. We took pictures and I would go around and check.
Yeah. So, so if you go to the third bullet that's there, you could probably add that.
The school property right here, this one.
Will be used in a careful manner, good order and discipline will be maintained. You know, facilities will be returned to their, or left in the same condition they were. Found, yeah.
Okay, I heard somebody say lint.
Yes, I said that.
Returned.
Lent.
Oh, oh, I thought you said lint.
I did too, I looked down.
Returned.
So, got it.
How long have you been here? I just realized.
Stop it.
I did. But she was.
Original.
I was looking down and I looked up like, oh, it's here.
I got here a little more than half hour ago. I had an I P meeting.
And facilities shall be.
I had an I P meeting and we couldn't get here.
Returned to the original. Uh, to the, or there.
It was a big. It was a big, it was a big one.
Their, their original condition.
Are usually an hour to two hour.
Completion.
Use.
I am transitioning to the middle school next year, so.
Do you want to sell people more?
Yeah. Big meeting.
Yeah.
I'm glad I was here and not there.
Do you want that semicolon there?
Yeah, because it's all within the category. Okay. Am I going down or am I going? I'm directionally challenged, we all know this.
No, I think we thought a little bit more that we haven't looked at.
Well, no, we were actually over here. So we've unamped up the procedure, so.
We were using the procedure to.
To, to deal with this.
To a sidebar.
Yes.
Procedure, so we just need to make sure that we're linking those two in.
What?
Forty-two ten and forty-two ten P, so I'll link those in.
Oh, okay, here? A gotcha, okay.
Cause that's what we've typically done.
Okay. This can be struck out. Although.
So the copy we have says that the physical distancing was struck out, but the rest of it was still there.
What's the rest of it?
Other federal, state, local, and district health measures.
In effect. Oh, okay, well, there we go. Let's unstrike it again, let's see what we have.
Just as interesting, um, it's there, I don't know why, but this.
Well, there are certain.
Can it just be really basic federally, state, local, district health measures in effect?
In effect, yeah.
That's it. Without any examples or anything.
Don't do any such as.
Will be observed.
Like, leave, take out that.
Seconds of cause.
For speech.
Federal, state, local, and district. Health measures in effect.
Are observed.
Are observed.
Or are observed.
Or be observed.
Will be observed.
Will be observed.
Covid.
Yeah, that's probably what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, but, you know, we have people using our fields during Covid, so. So all federal, state, local, and health district measures will be observed.
Perfect, cause if they use concessions, they have to make sure they. All of that code measures.
We already said they can't use concession.
True.
Don't be opening more worms. Don't like worms. Rent and deposit. So do we, we don't know about.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay, I'd really like Jessica to weigh in on the remainder of this, just because if. I know it's on the website, we don't have it within policy. I agree that we should have it in policy, so whatever is on the website should be reflected of what's in the policy. And, um.
So I'll have her look at the rent and deposit piece.
Yeah, and just make sure that, you know, either what's here or what's on the other one, you know, if they're in line, if they're completely out of line, that's totally fine because these haven't been approved by the board, but.
No, we're totally never taking deposit on anything.
Okay, well, it's a good thing there's new sheriff in town and she's willing to do this sort of stuff, so, thank you, Jessica. Alright, um. So we're done on all of these fun thingies. Oh, yeah, we had pulled this up, but yeah, that, I don't understand.
So we said Jessica, we're working on redrafting MOU with, uh, Brad from City, and then they'll bring that to you.
And it should be an annual, it should not be.
That's what Lisa said.
Yeah, and forever and always. Yeah, no, that's not acceptable, just okay.
We should just have all MOUs come to the board and set up, not just, you know, one.
It should be, I would agree with you on that.
Okay, so, um.
Moving on to thirteen thirty, thirteen oh three.
So I just, if we're gonna add anything else from there, so it's only F one, which that's required, but, um. When ISBA originally did this, there was, they were all numerical in order, so I cleaned that up a little bit.
That's fine, that's just clarification.
Yeah, so.
You need to make it smaller, just so we're clear. I guess I could do that too, right? I don't think I can do that. Let's see, I'm gonna have to, so, yeah, y'all.
Can we pick forty-two fifty-five? Um, so is there anything else that you think of that you wanna add?
I have no idea. Haven't we added a few other policies?
We did. So we added, um, we added dress code, uh. There was one, I think we added the code of ethics, maybe. I can't remember. We've added like, I think like two.
I thought we've added actually more than two, but I don't remember it coming back for approval, but has it been? Well, apparently.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, yeah, okay.
That's why I thought, I feel like we've added two.
Okay.
But I, I mean, I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
Um, but student dress needs to be cleaned up. So at this point, the yellow, you're good, I can un-highlight that, that's all we're adding.
Okay.
With forty-two ten, do you want anything else to be reviewed annually related to this whole policy?
At this moment, I have no idea.
Okay, okay. So when we bring it to the board, we can ask that, like, do they wanna look at the application on a regular basis?
Right, right, okay. And then.
Okay, so forty-four ten is the one that is listed in thirty-five fifty.
Okay.
Um, remember they listed it as forty-four ten T, but there's no B.
Gotcha.
Um, it's forty-four ten, and so some of the comments from thirty-five fifty were specific to like, oh, we don't have forty-four ten. So the only change to forty-four ten, since the last time, um, ISBA looked at it, was they added this piece of, before removing a student from school, the police shall sign a release form in which they assume full responsibility for the student. Otherwise, everything else is exactly, we have exactly what ISBA has on this particular policy.
Okay, well.
Oh, done.
This is not the thirty-three fifty, where we did two weeks ago, this is different.
This is different. We have all sorts of fun ones.
In thirty-five fifty, it references, in the preceding references.
Yes, right, but I, I was gone last week and so I looked at her and I'm like, we changed that, we did that.
So typically, um, when we link in a policy or link out a policy reference at the, within the narrative, we link it in.
And we didn't have this one, so we're better.
We just hadn't updated it, so we felt like we would update it first and then get it in.
Okay, so, we only have about fifteen minutes, let's see if we can get anywhere on this policy. So investigations and arrests by police. All contact between the school and the police department on matters involving students shall be made through the administrative office. Does that happen? Or administrative office would be principal, okay, nevermind, just thinking district office. The police have ample opportunity to talk to a student away from the school and before or after school hours. They should be encouraged to do so.
What is that?
Do we have to have that? That's, yeah.
I don't know, this was really.
Say if the police.
Are they saying it should be encouraged to do it instead of during school hours?
That's what it's saying.
Right, but if you look at that next sentence, it kinda covers it without sticking any edges. Or says, yeah.
Okay, um, law enforcement authorities should only be allowed to conduct an interview in the school if they can show that special circumstances exist, or if the interview is at the request of the school. This determination should be made by the principal or superintendent. Okay, it should be made.
But so like, we had a situation in a building a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was a week ago, where the parent called, we had nothing to do with it, we didn't know anything about it. Parent called law enforcement and, um, asked them to go to the school so they show up. School has nothing to do with it. They called the parent, the parent's like, yep, I wanted him arrested at school, I don't want him coming home. And we were like, this could happen not here, cause this, you know, but, um, if the, the parent and law enforcement and the school had nothing to do with it, but. People don't see that, right?
Right.
Just, it looks like it's, we are a part of it, or we, and it, this was all directed by the parent. So that's why it's really trying to make sure that when it can be done outside of school hours, that we're really protective of school hours. And that we've created a safe haven for kids. We try to, you know?
Alright, so if the police have a warrant for the student's arrest, they must be permitted to arrest the student. However, whenever possible, the arrest should be conducted in the principal's office out of view of other students. Before removing a student from school, the police shall sign a release form in which they assume full responsibility for the student. Okay, but in the other policy, we've created a form, but we're not requiring them to sign it.
Right. Which is why I looked at Shannon, I was like, didn't we take that out of the other one?
ISBA's recommendation.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so as long as within our own procedures, we know that there's a form there and that it's being filled out, it's the paper trail. Yes, we want them to sign it, but if we can't, if they can't, if they won't, whatever, then we at least have the form.
Okay, so I have a question about this one little bullet. So if police have a warrant, their arrest should be conducted in the principal's office out of view of other students. So I feel like we have a, an obligation to this student, to be as protective to this student as possible, so. I mean, shouldn't we be trying to the best of our ability to be protective of their personal rights and so it is private and so it's not. Cause in some buildings, the principal's office may not be the most private place, so just putting it, I mean.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it just be that, there's a, instead of giving a location, just.
Yeah.
And as private a location as possible.
Or as, no, protecting this child's privacy rights to the best of our ability or something.
Okay, so.
In a private location.
Yeah, so I just.
And not even just other students, just others.
Right.
Just their privacy overall.
All the staff doesn't need to know or see it.
There, there's everybody.
Right.
I just think we have an obligation out of view of others.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it could be a CPS situation and, but people think if it's law enforcement, then it's, you know.
Well, and you don't wanna narrow it down to just one location.
Right.
Cause if you have one acting principal in your building and they have another kid in there.
Charlie.
We need to move to the counseling center, or we need to move here, or whatever.
Law enforcement personnel should not, does everyone think that sounds a little better?
Yes.
Okay. Law enforcement personnel should not be allowed to roam about the school until the student is found. Uh, they should remain in the administrated, administration office while school personnel seek out the student.
Is that something that needs to be clarified?
I mean, I would say if an outside entity, it's just the same as anybody.
Right.
You, it is a controlled environment and.
We're gonna go get the student and bring them.
And we need to. I think it's important that that stays in there.
Okay, it's not just part of the typical policy.
But, I mean, it's also part of, one, if we're doing this in as private a location as possible, they're not look, going up and down the halls, taking them out of class.
Drawn attention in a situation, yes.
It's just in there.
So is the assumption there then that it's going to be handled either by admin or your S R O or whatever, you know what I mean? That they're going to retrieve that student and bring them, okay.
So the S R R O could retrieve the student.
Yes, or the admin, if he was like, I know where he is, I'm gonna go get them.
That's right, that's like splitting hairs because.
Law enforcement.
The law enfor, our S R O is law enforcement.
Well, they all are.
But, yes, but they're specific to your building.
But he's.
Right.
Yeah, versus a stranger that kids don't know who that is and it's a new person coming in.
Do we need to say outside law enforcement personnel, or just?
I, yeah, if that, getting.
Outside, outside, out of district.
I just think they shouldn't be allowed to roam around the school.
Because I know that.
It shouldn't be by students.
In the past, we've allowed police officers to come into the buildings and walk up down the hall.
But this is specific to an investigation and arrest. This isn't about their coming in to bring cookies, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, the whole restroom PD used to come in and do cookies and have lunch with kids at Betty Keifer, just to like, say hi, and right, that's different. This is specific to an arresting situation.
But what if there's, uh, a threat? Let's say, God forbid, we had a shooter or something like that, is that making it too murky or?
This is specific to an arrest.
But they would be there to arrest if there was a shooter or something like that, so.
Kind of safer threat, that allows to take care of those pieces.
And that would trump all of these issues.
Yeah.
So.
I think that's.
Your explanation of a parent calling, please, law enforcement, say, go to the school and arrest my child. So it's that kind of a situation, not.
I just think we have an obligation to be protective of people's privacy.
Yeah.
I mean, I would want that same thing extended for our staff.
And protect about the student.
You know, if there was a domestic situation or something and, you know.
An innocent until heard are guilty, so they shouldn't be seeking out the student for that.
And schools are supposed to be a safe haven for everybody.
Uh, if possible, the educational program of the student should not be disrupted to allow the police, to allow for police questioning. to allow for police questioning. This is, yeah, um
So is that repetitive? It says we already have that.
Investigations and arrests, that's specific to that.
Questioning them versus arresting them in review?
Yeah.
That's why they're Line, they're drawing that line, if there is, you know that there's criminal, potential criminal action, if you can have it outside of school, then that's what we push for, so that, again, it's not disruptive to the school environment. This is solely talking about when you expect criminal intent.
Any questioning by police should be conducted in a private room area where confidentiality can be maintained. Go ahead.
If a child is under eighteen, it's illegal for the police they, some parents have to give their consent for questioning, I thought.
No.
They, children in the other policy, which um we state that, you know, no child has the right to incriminate themselves. So they don't have to speak to the police. But if the police are there to investigate, or not investigate, but if they're to arrest
So they have to Mirandaize and
Right. But if they're there investigating something
Because see, that's when I read this policy when we reviewed, I, I'm like, wait a minute. That one has to be there if you're going to talk to a kid.
Because we had several law enforcement through that night, we talked about that and they wrote there that that is not
Yeah.
It's not statute, they do not have to
Yep.
Have a I was surprised, was that something that they're, no, it is not
But our policy has always been that we do everything we can to get ahold of and that, you know, they're giving either permission for us to do there to stand or we get them the opportunity to be there, that's always been our practice, but legally we, they, it, there isn't a, it's not a requirement.
I just
That's just always been our practice.
Because there has to be a positive in there, a positive person in there for the kid.
Well, we always stand, I mean, you, you know, we're not going to let some stranger talk to a kid by themselves.
And law enforcement's point that night was that sometimes it's about the, the parents and they're afraid to speak out.
So under E, it states if law enforcement officials are to be allowed to question a student under the age of eighteen, a reasonable attempt shall be made to notify the parents, except in cases of suspected child abuse or child neglect involving the parent. The parent should be given the opportunity to come to the school prior to the questioning. Okay, so we don't have
And I heard there's been a lot of feedback on our last one. It almost makes you think that if we take the wording from
That's what I'm thinking, we need to do
And put it here and make it similar, because that did get a lot of
It did.
Feedback in terms of
Well, I guess my question is, is do we need both?
Oopsies, what do you mean?
Do we need both policies?
So the other one is the interrogation.
It's the questioning.
Questioning. It's questioning, yeah.
But it's, it's, it is, it's staff and police, this one is specific to police, but if they're, if it's the same, do we have to have both?
What was that policy number?
Forty, thirty-five?
Fifteen?
Forty-four, forty-five, I think.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was thirty-four, thirty
Thirty-five, forty-five.
Thirty-five, forty-five, it's at the bottom.
Right there.
Oh, yeah, we've only got three minutes. Okay, so we're going to not go diving down that rabbit hole. Um we've got three minutes left, two minutes left. So what I'll ask for you to do is get that parent, that policy, look at the language that's in there and see if it mimics it, um because it's student, yeah, I don't understand why we would have student interviews, interrogations, and arrests, which that should be changed to it was interviews, oh, we changed, we took interrogations out.
I wasn't there for that call.
We did, because interrogations was too far.
Hard, so it was, I didn't get changed in the title.
I don't think it did.
Is it questioning?
Yeah.
I, my question is, was that in the thirty whatever the
Right, which is for students.
This is in the four thousands, is this we're talking about arresting or interrogating someone that's a student?
No, it's about an outside, it's about somebody, it's, the reason it's in the four thousands, it's because it's about its community coming into the building. I just, my question would be, is if we're going to literally copy and paste, do we have to have both?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I hear you.
Need it in there because it fits in community or, I don't know, I wouldn't have the same thing, because it's very
Is that, is that what police is deemed if, if we have SROs and we're talking about splitting them, we already have them, if you know what I mean, is that the end to community or would it just fall under student?
Well, if you talk to legal, they would say yes. I just called them about this, so we can go
The language needs to parallel.
Yeah.
And it looks like we should have the policy identified underneath, because all we have down here is abuse and neglect and it's, oh, I guess it is down here.
Thirty-five, fifty-five.
Does that work for me? Okay, so it's six twenty-nine, we'll go ahead and stop recording.